Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Um, should we put in talking about the vacuum?
Um, sure.
We can talk about that.
You can do that on a row.
Okay. So no adjustments?
Put it in the top.
I do computers, not copiers.
Hit copy. Find a copy button.
Sandy, you're parked behind you, so if you need to leave, you need to let me know.
Oh, you know I like to stay here right till the bitter end.
Look where it says copy. Well, don't say bitter end, just say...
The end.
The end. It would just sound so harsh. Harsh.
All right. So minutes from the far meeting.
I will accept them as the live correction that was made. Right, you did that correction and we got one?
Did the correction.
Yeah.
I don't know if we need to say with the correction.
Okay.
Already did it, so.
Okay, then, perfect.
All right. Is there a second for that?
Second.
I'll load some paper.
All right.
Public comments. Sandy?
Nope.
Public comments?
Uh, maybe.
Would you like us to skip you and come back?
Yes.
Okay.
Tom?
No.
Tom?
Yeah, to do that.
Tom?
I got a statement I want to read. "I've been a resident of this town for 70 years, and I've served on the road foreman, road commissioner, and on the select board for over 30 years. I care about the town. I've worked hard for the town in my wildest dreams."
If you want to read it. "I've worked hard for this town, and I never in my wildest dreams could have expected to be treated this way. I'm reading this statement because the latest lies about me are very upsetting to me. It was brought to my attention by Tim Stevenson, the chair of the emergency committee, that I was not allowed on town property per a select board order. During the most recent hurricane, Tim asked me to move the emergency trailer from the town garage to the church. I told him that I could not do that until someone unlocked the gate and the trailer hitch. When Tim called me back, he told me that a member of the highway department was coming over to do it because I was not allowed on town property per select board order. I was never informed of this, and I want to know: One, has the select board ever held a meeting about me not being allowed on town property?"
Do you want to answer that or go again?
I think, yeah, yes. No, I think that's a question.
We have never, we have never done that. We have never held a meeting.
Two, is there or has there ever been an order that I can't be on town property?
No.
No.
And by me, I mean my Uncle Tom. Three, am I allowed on town property?
Yes.
Including here in the town office?
Yes.
And at the town garage?
Yes, as long as the gate is unlocked, and I do know it is locked when there is no one there.
Unfortunately, I'm not surprised that this happened. Over the past 18 months, since the new highway department has taken over, there have been vicious lies about me that I've heard in the surrounding areas during the course of my work. The lies that the highway department are spreading about me not being allowed on town property, excuse me, especially about me not being allowed on town property, and their attacks against me and my family are affecting my health, my reputation, my business, and my ability to do my business. And I want to know, what is the select board going to do to stop this?
We can certainly discuss that with the highway crew. Have you got specifics as to what they, I mean, have you got it written down, what the specifics are, that they have done other than this? Because that's not, that is not accurate, that you're not allowed on town property.
Somebody had to make that order. Why would you say that?
It did not come from us, Tom.
And other rumors coming around that were dear with us a little bit.
Can we have a copy of the statement for a minute?
Yeah, and then to finish with the statement. "I want a copy of this place in the minutes. Thank you." And he signed, look back.
No, there was never an order, never, never a discussion about that one.
Tim has this now, please.
Tim?
Tim?
Yeah, I want to go back to a statement I think you made. I'm having difficulty hearing back, so maybe I got it wrong. But it sounded like you said a moment ago that as long as the gate was unlocked, in our situation, it was a Sunday when the gate was locked, and we needed Tom to go in. So what I would request is that Tom be given a key to access the, in case we have a situation like we had the last weekend of August, when Tropical Storm Henri made it sound like we needed to make preparations for it.
Tom, you say no?
No. You don't want a key to that place?
I certainly think that we could, we will be able to open that if need be, if there is a hurricane, if there is an emergency, that it can be opened.
Prior to the emergency?
Prior to, at the time of whenever we, whenever it is.
Who do we get in touch with about that?
Well, I'm thinking that if there is a hurricane brewing, and we know that something might be coming up, I'm sure we could just unlock the gate before the town crew.
Now, wait, are you talking about the select board doing this?
No.
Because up to now, it has been the responsibility of the emergency committee to get the trailer down to the church.
I personally do not have a key to that lock on the gate.
I would, I would suggest that you talk to the road crew first. If you cannot get anything from them, you talk to the select board, and we will get you in there, certainly if you need.
On that particular day, I tried to get ahold of Matt, and finally learned that he was upstate on vacation, and that, you know, was not a good situation. And I ended up with Eugene on the phone after I had left a couple of messages presumably at Matt's home, although it might have been on his cellphone, I'm not sure.
My understanding is Matt came back that night because of the hurricane.
That afternoon.
Afternoon.
Yep. Is there only one key for that lock on the gate?
I don't know. I thought I had a key to it at one point, but I don't.
Maybe we can keep a key here at the town office in case there is an emergency like that, a select board person.
Yeah, I think that would be great to have a key that's accessible to the people.
I don't know what else to do.
Yes, I will talk to Matt about getting a key that Darlene can keep her key on.
The only thing I, the one thing that I want to place though is that, you know, if there is an emergency, like things are going to happen, and things are going to happen fast, and we need like people to be like, people to be like ready to respond and all of that, so I think there needs to be a very clear protocol, it needs to be written down of who is in charge of having that key, who do we contact, and if that person is not contactable, who do then we go to to then be able to help them out?
We haven't, we had a clear protocol until this last incident with Tom being the person that the first called, and if he wasn't available or couldn't do it, Pastor Noyes has always agreed to be the backup. So if you want to jettison this plan, and Tom, did you say you didn't want a key? Is that, oh, then we need to have a clear, as which you just said, a clear protocol so that I can act on the, and get the, and get the trailer down here.
One thing.
So what do you come up with, David? Please let me know, okay?
All right. One thing that I would ask, though, that you not do, is park it down back.
We never have, and never would.
Just up, up there, because it back can flood.
That's what we told Eugene to do it, and we did.
The lower school parking lot?
Lower school parking lot. I just want to be sure that it's never parked down here, because that will flood, so.
That they can't give class to right now.
Well, they can't, but when they can't, I don't want that. All right. Hannah, do you have something?
Nope. That's April.
April, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Krista. Were you trying to give me a view? You can give me a shot now. Oh, I'm sorry. So I just have just a follow-up to that, because I think it was just glazed over that there are town employees, like obviously saying rumors that, as you can see, are like really upsetting to my uncle, and as you stated, affecting his business and his health, which are pretty serious allegations. And also, this is a small town, so there's just lots of stuff that happens. So I just want to read this, just to get it in the record. "The lies that my uncle just shared, the lies that my uncle just shared are just one of the most recent things in the bullying between the town crew against my uncle and my extended family that's been occurring over the past year. The cameras weren't here in June, so I'll fill in what happened most recently, in addition to what my uncle just shared. Earlier this spring in a select board meeting, the road foreman stated that he was brought to his attention that my family's mailboxes, which are in front of the town garage driveway, needed to be moved because the driveway needed to be altered to meet the state highway standards. Accordingly, my extended family and I all received demand letters that we needed to move our mailboxes based upon the road foreman's statements. I contacted the state highway department and was informed that contrary to what the road foreman said, no one from the state had contacted the town, and that in fact the driveway was within the town, within the state guidelines. This means that what the road foreman said simply was not true. In June, I presented these emails from the state to the board, as well as copies of the guidelines, showing that the driveway conforms with state standards. We even took a field trip to the mailboxes to look at it. Even when presented with all of this evidence, the board still voted 2-1, with select board member Perry being the only dissenting vote, to force my family to move our mailboxes. And select board member Perry presented new reasons which were not in the original demand letter. Although we are not having to move our mailboxes, at least for now, this shows that the road man's, road foreman's false statements about the state guidelines, the communication, were unfounded. I've attended every select board meeting this year, either in person or virtually, and at almost every select board meeting, there's an executive session at the end for employee discipline, as I'm sure there will be again tonight. However, nothing's ever announced and no action's ever taken. At the select board meeting in March after select board member Perry was elected, many people expressed their concern about her conflict of interest regarding the town employees, since she's the mother of the road foreman, who's one of only two full-time town employees. These fears proved to be well-founded, as shown by her siding with the false statements and the evidence that was presented. Considering what my uncle has said and the defamatory statements that he experienced, I remain concerned about the select board's ability to be fair and impartial, considering this potential conflict. In light of this, I want the board to clarify what the select board's policy is regarding the conflict that Ms. Perry has with the employee discipline procedures."
We have a conflict of interest policy. You can get a copy of that from Darlene. You can do that. One thing I, in use, can I just see that for just a sec? I would like you to clarify on it, because it kind of sounded like we voted to make you move it.
No, it was, it was 2-1 that it got to say.
It didn't, but it just sounded that. You want to give us that?
Yeah, you can have that.
Do you need to make a copy?
No.
But it was voted that we not to, so.
It's just, how does that work? Like, is she able to vote on disciplinary matters?
We follow the policy that we have, and if there's a conflict of interest, no.
All right. And then in closing, as it says there, I just wanted to remind everyone that since the board has been informed of the defamatory statements, if conduct continues, the town can be potentially liable for any losses that result.
All right.
Me?
No.
Yeah, I just have a, I have a comment on the key to the town garage. I was just wondering if maybe one of the emergency crew members?
Emergency committee?
Committee, yeah. I wonder if they could have it, so when they need it, on a split second moment, they could get in. That's just a suggestion.
That's reasonable. We come up with a, something we writing there, we'll, we can.
Because sometimes things happen so fast that you can't get ahold of people fast enough.
Like the flood that we had here, you know? 4 o'clock, we weren't sure there was going to be much of anything. By 8 o'clock, everything was flooding out, so. Nice.
I don't know where to begin, David. I guess I look forward to the night I come in here, a select board meeting, and all this, this rift between the road crew and a particular family in town finally ends. I can understand limiting access to the town garage and the lot there. The road foreman, road commissioner is responsible for all the equipment and supplies there, and I can understand him being a little bit protective of it, because if anybody goes in there, it seems like the more keys you have out, you know, the more likelihood is somebody's going to get in there and something disappears or is missing. Who is there? Who has a key? And I'm going to address Tom. This town has been full of...
Guys, you got to address the board.
I'll address the board. This town, there's people in this town that pass around rumors and lies about people for as long as I can remember, and sometimes the people who live in glass houses shouldn't be throwing stones. Because, you know, when it comes back to you, it's a little different than when you're the one, you know, making, making up the stories and the lies and passing around the rumors. When they're directed at you, it's a little different, so. I look for, to the day that this town kind of mends its wounds here, and just works together and help the town move forward, but I don't see it happening too soon the way things are right now.
All right. Sure.
Yeah, two points. One, just with regards to, I think, some points that Krista made. What I've been noticing too is that when the camera is here from Fact TV, it is no longer here after the executive session, and I think it would be important if Fact TV were able to stay to capture the entirety of the meeting. And I don't know how that decision is made, if you dismiss them after, when you go into executive session, if that comes from Fact TV management, but I think it would be beneficial for the entirety of a meeting to be recorded.
We are not in charge of Fact TV. They come here to do the service for us. I suspect if we said that you need to stay, they would happily stay. But if there is probably no decision to be made, and nothing else to happen at the meeting, to make them stand outside for half an hour, let's say, could be less, could be more, if we don't believe that there's going to be any action. If there was going to be some action that we believed was going to happen after executive session, then we'd probably ask them to stay.
But there's also a second go-around of public comments that can happen after that.
That's correct.
There's opportunities for questions to be asked by the public, and that's not being reported. So again, I would ask that you request Fact TV to stay and record the entirety of the public session.
Turn off the comment, please.
Yeah.
Usually what other boards, it's the only board that doesn't do it. They do everything, public comment, everything, to the very end, and have the executive, they push the executive to the end of the meeting.
We do as well, but we let people comment afterwards, and that's...
Well, I don't know if I want to say for that.
Yeah?
So the other thing I wanted to question, and this may come up, and I don't know, I don't see anything on here about the, the school committee, well, it's not so much about the committee, but the school building. I had an exchange in emails today with Sandy and Darlene, because, and this will come up under the meeting house, and we'll talk about it then, but in that exchange around trying to find if there existed a form for a facility, I had raised the point that I thought that it was currently available to rent that space if someone wanted to, and I remembered being here, yes, you're nodding your head. I remember being here at a select board meeting when the board gave Darlene the authority to handle that, and that Sandy was saying that wasn't true, so I just thought it was important to get clarity on that piece.
I am not sure if it's to rent the building.
Well, rent or use.
For use for, you know, just for use of the building, it wasn't for rental.
Okay.
They just had to come to me and ask.
Okay. All right, so that's the distinction. Renting is not okay, but use is okay?
We, I believe our policy was that we weren't renting it out to people to collect money and such from that, but we were letting people use the building. I think we've used it once. I know of one other inquiry about using the building, but it's...
And is that only for the residents of Athens, or anyone who needed to use it?
We had a policy, we wrote out about it, so I don't have that with me, but...
I think it's necessary for our committee to have that policy, because I was completely unaware that there was any policy set forth.
All of the policies should be in the policy book, right?
Yep.
Because I would like to know too, if our insurance is going to cover it if somebody is just in the building using it.
We looked into that when we did that, and it was.
It's a community use of school facilities.
Okay, so that needs to be changed, because it's no longer a school facility.
Well, it was, this was a town...
This was a town policy.
It was when the town owned the building. It wasn't, it wasn't the school committee that did it, but it was, we call it the school building.
Did I have a copy in there?
Yes, we can. So what this says is, it is a policy of the Athens Grafton School District, so we do need to change it because...
Well, no, we had another one, because we had that, and we had another one, at some point.
That still says Athens. Athens facility. This says available for use by the residents and members of the public, is what this one says.
And that's for the former school building, community center building.
But it says pillars. It doesn't say with building, it just says...
Is there a date on it?
Facility to use.
It's probably the one that is in the book that's signed that has a date on it.
I don't see one in here.
And you know what? I don't think we adopted this, because it does not say it's been adopted.
It hadn't been signed, but I remember we adopted it. Because we had in here town office and the former, former elementary school. So yeah, I'm quite sure we did adopt it. I don't know.
I don't know 100% for sure. Do you want to put it on the next meeting, and then we can adopt it?
We can do that. But I think we did, and it's just where the policy is at this point. I would give this, does somebody want to make some copies of it, so that anybody wants to read it, they can, and Sandy can get a copy of it. If somebody has a problem with it, let us know before we, I know we adopted it.
I thought we did, but if we... I mean, I always have... Yeah, I'm not sure either, because, I mean, all the policies aren't you signing, we're putting them in the book.
And is there, is there anything that limits the area of use when somebody's in the building? Because obviously, we don't want people going down cellar if there's no need for it.
There is nothing stated in that policy. Let me take, read the whole thing and then check.
I don't think it says that, you know, you can use this section and not that section, but I think it's implicit that you can say, don't use basement.
Can I make this aggression? Again, I'll talk about this under meeting house business, but I borrowed a form from Brookline that was a facilities use agreement, which I think is different than a policy. You may have a policy, and then when you have someone that wants to use it, you have a facilities agreement that outlines everything, and so on that, you could state, you know, is it using just the outside grounds of the school? Is it used at the former school? Is it using the basement? Is it using the upstairs for us, for the meeting house? Is it using the lawn, or is it using the building?
Yeah, because I think that would be really good, to be a little more specific rather than say building.
Right. Yes, but it's individually one, one or the other, that when somebody comes and they say, I want to use everything, you say, well, no, you can't use the basement, you can't use the office.
No, which I understand, but I just think it's good that we can be a little more specific, because obviously, we don't want people just walking into the office where we're storing materials.
You don't want somebody to use this building and then go out and say, well, we want to look through, you know, everything in that room.
Well, I would hope that we could also take, have a clue that locks the door where office things are now going.
It's hoped that we're going to change that, if you want one locked.
Yeah, right, but then you, so you don't have...
But you know, it's also, there's the, there's still the closet up there, the clean closet, you know? That, I'm not sure if anybody's got a key to that door anymore. And down in the basement, you know, utility rooms with that stuff that's in there.
Okay. Tim, public comments. We'll be right back.
Yes, I wanted to get some clarity on the hazard mitigation plan. First, could I get ahold of a copy of the one that had expired? I assume the office must have one.
We do.
Could I get a copy of that, please?
Sure.
And also, in light of the fact that it has expired, I'm wondering if, what if any steps have been taken to, to get a new one in place?
Well, like we explained last meeting, we have applied for the grant to do that. Alyssa Sabato is busy helping other towns, because I don't believe there's any towns that have, that have expired plans, that have new plans at this point in time, they're working on it. Was the emergency committee going to be working on that, Tim? Because I thought that was part of what we were going to do with that.
The emergency committee will certainly participate in whatever happens, but I'm talking about initiating activity. So if I understand you correctly, you're saying that we're waiting for the grant to come before we're going ahead? And then, will you be the one to, to call a meeting of all?
I can't.
Parties?
Sure.
Yeah. Which would definitely include the road crews. I remember it, our last, the last time we did this, the road crew played a significant role.
Yeah, Tom did a lot of the work on that. I, we could call it through this, through the select board, or we could call it through the emergency committee, but I will, once we have information on when we get the grant, when we can then hire somebody to assist us with that, I will notify the emergency committee and the select board about that, and the road crew, and they will work, start working on that.
So I'm also concerned that there be someone, and I would think someone on the select board, that should have responsibility for keeping track of the hazard mitigation plan, so that it, we don't suffer the fate that we have suffered with this, with this previous one, where it goes out of date.
Tim, we have not suffered any, Tim. We, Tim, please. We have not suffered anything. The plan expired in 2021.
Yeah.
All of the towns that have also expired in 2021 are now working on the plans, as we are. The state is granting grants to the towns that do it. We have not fallen behind, I take the section to the, to the fact that you're saying, we're way behind, everything's expired, everything's gone. That is not factual.
Well, that's good. But I still think we need someone to keep track of this.
As I applied for the grant last year, I have kept track of this. Tim?
Carolyn, Caroline Mass, who is the state hazard mitigation planner for the Vermont Emergency Management, in a, a long email mentioned that someone in the town should be coordinating with Vermont Emergency Management Public Assistance Officer with regard to the public assistance from FEMA. I assume that's what you've been doing, then?
I have been working with the state, and not with FEMA as much, but with the state. FEMA approves the plan once it's written. It goes to the state to be reviewed, and then it is presented to FEMA, who either approves the plan or does not approve the plan, and sends it back for more work. That is what FEMA's main job in that is.
Okay.
In the plan.
Good.
All right. Lynn, did you have something?
I just have a quick question. So if FEMA does not approve the plan, do they tell you what needs to be removed from or added to, or they just...
They will have suggestions on what happens and what doesn't happen, so. Lynn?
Back on the school issue, we're, I kept hearing comments that we're not, they don't want to let people use the basement. Am I understanding that correctly?
At this time, the access to it is not good, and there's a bunch of things down there, so it is...
Not much down there, we're cleaning out, because that's the one piece I do use.
Okay. I'm not saying that you can't use that, but it, there is some junk, there's a piano down there, and there's some other stuff there that needs to be cleaned, and then the access needs to be worked on as well, so, before we really want people down there. Isn't that right, Sandy?
Yeah, we have, there's, we need to clean out chemicals out of one of the utility rooms, and so it's just not a good place right now.
Well, yes.
Cherry was, Cherry was.
No, Cherry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to come back to something with regards to the emergency committee. As I recall, or the hazard mitigation plan, as I recall at the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion around going ahead and not waiting for the grant to come in and then finding somebody because we didn't know how difficult it was going to be to find somebody, given what we had heard from Alyssa Sabato.
Oh, I, Denise, did you get a chance to check in on the, if we go with the ballots rather than the actual meeting, if we would be able to change or make amendments to stuff? I can't remember exactly what we asked you to check on, but.
I did check to see if we go Australian ballot, it can be changed for prior years, but once it's Australian ballot for this year, it can't be changed for the upcoming year. So once we sit, it's Australian ballot, it has to stay Australian ballot for that year. We can change it for subsequent years.
And we can debate everything except candidates cannot speak.
Candidates cannot speak.
But you can debate the, any articles, any budget.
But once that article is on the Australian ballot, that's it. We can't make amendments or anything.
That's correct.
Like we normally do from the floor.
That's correct. Well, we should only have one shot at going around the room here, but we should, go ahead.
Well, I'm glad I'm going after Tim. I am going to submit, commit a copy for each of you. I contacted the Agency of Natural Resources and the Department of Environmental Conservation about flood zone mapping and about the hazard mitigation plan. And I'll take you page by page to sort of like my conversation.
Hold on just a second. You take this to boards and officials. We'll move on from that, from public comments to boards and officials.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Cool, all right. I planned this. So at the top of page one, so this is a conversation with Rob Program Manager at the Environmental Conservation. In order to get full FEMA funding, there are two things that need to happen. The first, you know, the hazard mitigation plan, which we all have beaten to death at this point. And the second is about needing to map floods hazard areas and enforcing regulatory standards, including issuing permits for development on those flood areas. AKA, that sounds to me like zoning. So that's just something to keep in mind that we are going to get more flooding. It's inevitable. And if we ever want to do the full FEMA funding, that is something that we'll have to wrestle with, especially because a lot of our, a lot of housing in this area, I imagine, is in the flood zone.
Well, it, it, it is, and you're right, it is a part of zoning, but it is only zoning within the flood plain. It's only setting out rules for structures in the flood plain. It's not total zoning for the town.
And technically, that doesn't have to.
No, but it would be, it would be called the hazard permitting plan.
When was the last time the flood plain was mapped? It's been years.
Well, no, it hasn't. It has been a few years and not, they were, we were, when we were looking at this once before, it, we were told to wait because they were coming out with new, new flood maps for the area. I've actually never seen the new flood maps, but I believe that they are out and we'll show where the flood area is. Now, the, the old ones I know, the flood zone stopped at the bridge down there. It was sort of from Cambridge Port out through to the bridge here, but then didn't cover anything, nothing south of this bridge.
So, yeah, so I've talked to John Broker Campbell, who's, who's a person in charge of doing the flood maps. I'll be having a meeting with him on Monday, so feel free to let me know if you have any questions, if you want me to relate to him or if you want to join in that meeting. They've been very evasive about what our flood plans are, so I'm gonna, in this conversation, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna try to get a clarified answer about what's happening with the flood maps because we need them.
We have, we have a resource in this down, a, a person that works for FEMA and deals with flood mapping and is within the, not mapping, but hazardous mitigations and things that would be, if we get it together to, to put in place that, a flood insurance, he would certainly, he has offered to help in the past and I suspect he would be able to help in the future with that too.
Was this person?
I'll give that to you later there and you can talk to him about it.
Yeah, it'd definitely be good to like talk to them before and or after. I talked to John suddenly, making sure that. I'm having everything. The, in the second page, I just want to note a few things. At the end of the second paragraph, and this is Caroline Mass up from, I think this is NRCS, or not NRCS, but National Resources Department, talking about that we need to make sure that we don't, we don't let basically that the thing expire. We have to, it expires every five years and we need to apply for the grant two to three years before it expires. I just want to put that.
And we did.
Oh, we did, okay. Yeah, and it just saying here, someone should be coordinating with the Vermont Emergency Management Public Systems, which I mentioned is what you're doing there. And then the last page is, is a, is a community report for Athens that, that they gave us about like what are the things that we have on here and what is it that we don't to be able to apply for the national flood insurance program. And again, that includes a permitting for flooding areas, so unless we have that, we can't have.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's part of it, that you have to, you have to institute those ordinances to be able to get flood insurance.
Would you?
Yeah.
Could you tell me the name of the person you're going to talk to about the flood maps?
Sure, John Broker Campbell.
Okay, I see it, yeah.
Okay. Regional flood. There are two other things that I wanted to note here, which is sort of still part of public comments. I'm sorry for like jumping around.
All right.
Well, actually, the first one, I guess, is part of this, but we were wondering if we can have a copy of the hazard, of the old hazard mitigation plan. And there's also a thing here as part of the community report that says emergency management plan, the supposed link we have.
Yeah, we don't, we don't release the emergency management plan, the hazardous mitigation plan, certainly can have that. The other one is more everybody's phone numbers and that is basically used by emergency management in Maupiaia. If there's an emergency, they are then able to contact people that they need to contact and where they work and where they live and things like that.
That sounds like ground information. But the hazard mitigation plan would be?
Yes, and as I told Tim, we can, Dallin can get it for you. We can't get it right now, but during the meeting, but yes.
Okay. And the last thing that I had on here is, so just to clarify, the schoolhouse is completely unusable?
No.
No.
It can be used.
Yes.
Because I am just wanting to understand the process, because a few friends in the area have asked me to do some salsa classes. In my previous career, I was an international performing artist who does a lot of salsa and it would be really special to me to share that. So I was wondering if the schoolhouse could be a place where I could do like once a month, like salsa class with like a little music and anyone's invited really. And like, I don't know if I have to pay, if like, I don't understand the process.
I think that is what the, the goal is of the committee and is, and that's what they're thinking about is so that people can use it just like that, right at the moment.
Are usable now for that.
It's not usable now because we still need to empty out some of them.
We have boxes of paper, we have different things around there, but we have a plan for that that I suspect that Sandy is going to talk about, you know, when we get to her and boards and officials. But yes, this week, next week, probably not, but maybe November, December.
Yeah.
Hopefully it'll be people.
Yeah.
Okay. That was it, thank you.
Okay. Boards and officials, Sherri.
So I don't remember if it was last month or the month before, there was some conversation about rentals of the meeting house and we have had an inquiry, a very serious inquiry. It's a very small event, but we have jumped on the bandwagon of getting things in order so that we can do that. So you may recall when we talked about this last time, I raised the question of having the rental done in, in the name of the historic society on behalf of the town. So it's like we're sort of serving as the agent for the town. I spoke to Vermont League of Cities and Towns and they clarified that there would be no problem with that. And they also gave me some direction, strongly encouraged anyone that is renting the facility to have a single day event insurance. And there is a link from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns website to, for, for an individual who wanted to rent the building to be able to go there and go to that and create their own policy based on their event. And then they pay for it right online and then the proof of that would come right to the town because you're doing it through Vermont League of Cities and Towns.
Would the League of Cities and Towns be the insurer or would they, do they have a third party?
It's a third party insurance broker they work with.
And I think it was around the time we came up with the facility policy here that we asked the, the meeting house committee to come up with a plan and a policy for that as well. Did you ever do that?
Well, that's part of what I have here. I was talking about an agreement versus a policy. So I have an agreement here and I have a draft of it, so I wanted to share that with you guys.
Certainly an agreement is, is needed and should, and should be had, but I think we need a policy as well as to do that. And I know we asked you to, we asked the meeting house, we need to come up with that and not.
So technically, it's just a town office and the former elementary school. This policy does not include the meeting house?
That's because we wanted to let the meeting house committee decide and come up with a policy on how they could do that.
Because that technically is a rental property?
No, it's not a rental property, but it's, we wanted to let the meeting house committee have, have a say in what went on with that and how, and how that went on. I mean, the meeting house committee will, will do all this, but there needs to be a policy at some point too. If you want to copy our policy and go over that.
I wasn't happy with that policy.
You could, you could try that, but we did, we did ask that. And I think around this time too, that meeting house is being worked on and it wasn't, wasn't open to be rented out when we did this policy, but.
That's a ways back, wasn't it?
It was a ways back, but we've had this policy and shortly after we took ownership of the school and the former school. And I know that we had talked about that. I mean, did anybody ever come up with any kind of draft policy or anything for the meeting house?
No, I just tracked down this rental agreement as a place to start that we could utilize this. I'm happy to take a look at that policy. The request for the rental is for October 2nd. So that's going to be before your next meeting. I'm not quite sure what you would want us to do if we need to have a policy in place or if we just need to be able to have this agreement in place and you know sort of the parameters of what would.
So, one question about this on, on section 11 alcohol. Do you know if alcohol will be sold or will it be given, given away?
I don't believe there'll be any alcohol at this event. This is, and just to say and give credit, this is really completely derived from Brookline's facilities rental agreement. And then I tweaked it a little bit.
One thing that Athens is very alone in in the state, there are six other dry towns in the state and Athens is one of them, and you can't sell alcohol in the town of Athens. So.
I had no idea.
You will want to work on that.
It's a well kept secret, I would say. Been there 24 years.
It can be drank, it just can't be sold.
They supply their own. Could they bring their own to the party and serve it?
Yeah, but I think that's something that you need to do when you have a large section on the alcohol, that you need to make clear that it can't be sold.
Yeah, okay, all right. So I'll go back and tweak that one and make sure. There is something in there that talks about serving it versus selling it. So I'll just modify that in terms of. Not per se.
All right, in our policy for the, for the former school in here, consumption of alcohol is prohibited.
Sale, possession, consumption and use of marijuana and illegal drugs are forbidden on municipal property. The sale, possession, consumption of use of alcohol, alcoholic beverages are forbidden on any municipal property.
So that was part of the.
Say it again, sale, and?
And use.
And consumption.
And consumption.
So they couldn't even serve it?
Well, this, this, this policy is for this building and that building.
Okay. So that's why.
And that was one of the reasons we wanted the meeting house to come up with something specific for it.
I wish you would share that fact of the town being a dry town a while back because it would have triggered my need to do something about this. I don't believe there'll be any alcohol at this event, so I, I don't think it's an issue. It's a very small wedding ceremony and then they're going to a, a local inn for a lovely dinner and reception and blah, blah, blah. They just want to do the ceremony in the building.
I, I don't have any problems with that. You know, I haven't read over this entire agreement here.
So the thing I would like to get some input on, because I'm a little new on this and anybody else here in the room that might have more information to shed on it. On number nine for the insurance, it is asking that whatever sole, sole cost and expense of comprehensive liability insurance, the town is the additional insured and that it be for $1 million per occurrence and $1 million in the aggregate. And I don't know if those are the numbers we would want in that or, again, this came from Brookline, so it's their numbers, not my numbers, and I don't know.
I don't know either.
If that's a standard number.
The other thing that I might want you to do with this is to have it reviewed by Vermont League of Cities and Towns because they are our insurance carrier and see what they say about that. And they may say, yes, the million dollar, million dollar is fine, or they may say they want something else, but they are the insurance carrier that we would use for that.
There has been an extremely helpful woman named Kelly that I've been communicating with at Vermont League of Cities and Towns, so I'm sure she'll be happy to give this a look and tell us if it's okay. And, you know, it, it, we haven't discussed any kind of a fee, a set fee. I think there was some suggestion in one of the email exchanges today about it possibly being a donation, you know, that would go towards the building. And this policy also, or not policy, but this agreement also calls for a security deposit. But I, I guess what I would like is, is it possible for you to review this and maybe within the week? Tell me if there are any things that.
I will read it over the past year.
Need to be changed. Janet, did you have a chance to look at it before tonight?
I was given the letter, that's why I wanted to print it out so I could read it. Remember I'm in the A to F fields with alcohol, so we need to decide.
And I may have changed, modified it a little bit, Janet, from what you printed out, so if you care, why don't you take this extra copy of it out? Because I think some of the bullet points at the end, when I went back and looked at it, didn't really seem to apply.
We won't review it now during the meeting, but why don't we review it and we will get back to you on that.
Can, can you possibly make a motion that you will review it and communicate and then communicate back to me and approve that so that we don't have to, that we can do this by October?
I will make a motion that we allow the meeting house committee to rent the building on October 2nd, provided that the LCT reviews the rental agreement and is satisfied with it. And we will get back with you by Monday.
That sounds good. My question is number 11 dealing with alcohol. We need to, are we going, well, they can consume it, but they can't sell it?
You cannot sell it.
Okay. And I've got a note on that, so I'll modify that.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right. All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
I think that's it.
It does say on here...
Is there anything you remember from the meeting that I should be touching base on here? Oh, I know, there was one other thing. There are, and Dawn, I wanted your input on this. There are some old sheet rock sections that are in that closet under the stairway. They're kind of bent like this because they've been leaning against the wall in there for God knows how long. And I'm thinking they're not of any use at all and we would like to get rid of them. And that way we can store the new signs that we have for our events in that closet and then when people come in to use the building or we go to use the building, it's nice and neat inside. Is there a dumpster behind the garage?
I don't believe there is a dumpster there now. What we can do is if you get a dumpster and have a roof picket, pick that up and throw them in there.
Are there plans to get it, oh, a dumpster maybe when the school...
When we work on the school, the former school up there to clean that out and clean up, yes. So they're his plans, it's no set date for that. It may be a month or so. All right. Lynn, boards and officials?
Okay. So the school board, we met September 8th. At that point, the school boards were notified that the superintendent, Chris Pratt, and the assistant superintendent, Dr. Lynn Carey, have both handed in their resignations due to personal reasons. And then Andy Haas was appointed that night as the interim superintendent to take effect that day. The process of seeking superintendent candidates will get started as soon as possible. And then Wednesday, the September 15th, I was notified that Grafton Elementary School was temporarily closed and using virtual learning due to two students that ride the bus tested positive for COVID. Other students are currently being tested. I'm not aware when the school will return to in-school session. I think it will as soon as the protocols are followed.
Does the school provide testing with somebody coming out to test the students? Or are they, do they have to find their own? For that, you know? Do you have somebody come test students or...
In a case like this, I don't know. They have to find their own.
They have to find their own.
I know Graft, I know Townsend, Grace Cottage does testing.
During, yeah, but the testing sites are not open as much as you would think. Some, there's one in Springfield, it's in the mornings, weekdays, weekends, it's hard to find. And I didn't know if the school had some policy in place to have a school nurse or somebody be there to test the children when they need it instead of making...
Well, in this case, the kids are being tested individually from home because the school is closed.
But what I'm saying is instead of making parents take their kids to Brattleboro, to Springfield, looking online to find a place, Townsend, when it's open, it might be a good idea to, I mean, you have school nurses, it's not, you know, it could be something that they could...
I'll bring that up at the next meeting and see if I can get some information on that.
Because a whole school full of kids having to, and parents having to drag them everywhere.
They're not retiring all the kids to be tested, it's only the ones that have direct contact. Everybody in the school has to be home and all the high school, middle school kids have to be tested. But Grafton Elementary does not have to be.
Well, even at that, I'm sure there's a number of kids that have got to be tested.
Yeah, it's like 15 or 20.
Yeah, and it's...
Yeah, the hospitals are, well, I think I'm going to point that.
Yeah, the places are pretty easy. You can usually go to them, you don't need a referral or something like that. But still, it's, Townsend is the closest to us, but still, it's Brattleboro, it's not as easy as it was, once was, so that might...
Is Townsend in the system for making appointments? Because I looked into it recently and I saw Springfield and Brattleboro and I didn't see Townsend.
Yeah, you have to make an appointment for Townsend, is what I understand.
You have to call them.
You call them, they're not in the online system.
I'm just saying, that might be a reasonable thing to do, that the school provide that. If they're going to make kids get tested, we will know they're tested and not just somebody say, yeah, we got tests, we're fine.
I will bring that up. And then to close it out, the Shickfree and Westminster School is also operating under temporary virtual learning due to a student testing positive. And again, I don't know when they, he'll be back into in-class learning as of yet. And we've had a couple of questions already about the school. When, yesterday, they had a meeting, the chairs attended a meeting with the state and the state had okayed the separation of Westminster from Ath-Graft. And the final separation will be June 1st, July 1st, June 1st, I think.
July 1st.
July 1st.
Of 2022.
2022, yeah. But they, Westminster has in place a school board that is just for Westminster and they've been given permission to do all their prep budget and hiring so that they'll be ready to go on July 1st.
And just Grafton also had that in place as well to have...
We have no changes in our board. We're still the union. Now, we will be, after Westminster leaves us, looking for a new name. And as far as budgeting purposes, are you guys meeting for that or you're just going to go with... Yeah, budgeting purposes. Yeah, we have our school board, we're proceeding as normal.
It might be good to have, get info from people, what they want for the name because the old name for the district was kind of troublesome.
Yeah. We definitely won't be going that route. That was state mandated, not us. I'll tell you in a minute. So, yeah, anybody that's got an idea, pass it on to me. We'd love to have suggestions.
And it will still be considered a joint district?
No.
Or is it going to be considered a union?
It's considered a union, we're staying a union.
Athens-Grafton.
We don't want to go back to joint.
Okay.
That's dispensable.
All right. Anna, anything for boards and officials?
I think the only thing for budget committee is that we would like to get on the agenda for October to discuss what projects the select board might have in mind for next year.
Okay.
We started the budget.
Because meetings are kind of full now, a special meeting would be better, maybe at a budget committee meeting?
That'd be all right for me. I mean, I'm not the chair anymore.
I think October 12th is our next budget committee meeting. We've been doing them virtually, but we could meet in person for that probably.
You good with that?
I'm good with that.
So we would have to warn it as a select board meeting too, but it would just be to meet with the budget committee, so... What time?
We had Tuesday at 7:00.
So October 12th at 7:00 p.m.
Just make sure that's the right date.
Do you want to have a list of projects you want to do for next year on that date?
Yeah, it would be, it's great to, yeah, hear from you what you'd like us to be working on if there's anything new and different. Yeah, October 12th.
All right. We will warn that as a joint meeting and it'll be here, here or...
I think we can do it here.
All right. Dawn? Nothing but boards and committee? Sandy?
Well, we had our first meeting of Community Center Advisory Committee. Community Center Advisory Committee, or...
What was that again?
Yeah.
It's a Vulcan, though.
No, it's not Vulcan.
Extra plan.
So we are, we started the general outline of what we want to do and one of the things that came up was there is still a lot of stuff in the school. We still have desk teeny-tiny chairs. There's a ton of paper that had been offered to the school system and refused. You know, there's, it's all kid's stuff. Graph paper, writing paper, stuff like that. So one of the ideas we're kicking around was October, by the end of October, is having basically a tag sale, but it would be a donation tag sale. Things would be set up upstairs in the main room. All the paper, whatever else we have that we feel that we don't need any longer. And it would be open to the public to come in, to take a look at the school because I know some of you haven't been in there in a long time. And help yourself to whatever's there that you'd like to have and you make a donation. And that's it. And this Saturday, our group is meeting informally and what we are going to do is we are going to go through all three floors and take a look at what's in there.
The attic is packed full.
Yes. Well, this is per the thing we could...
Some of it's down.
Yeah. You know, so we are going to be looking generally at the building, at what's in the building, trying to get a, at least a general inventory. So then we will know what the next step is. We do know that we are going to be getting a dumpster because we know the attic needs to be emptied out. There's a lot of stuff.
So might I recommend, when you get time getting around to doing the attic, if you contact the high school, students always need community service hours and they can help you empty the attic?
Yeah.
I will make a motion that we authorize the advisory committee to dispose of the unneeded property, either through the tag sale, disposing of it, or any school or town needing some of the equipment, they can have it for free. But the committee has the authority to dispose of the rest of it that is not needed or going to be used by the town.
I'll sign that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So that's where we stand right now and then we will start working on having salsa classes there.
I'm going to take a class, Sandy.
I have two left feet. I'm looking, I can walk in a straight line.
Chemicals out of there, how to be disposed of.
Yeah, that's another thing that you...
Yeah, I will get with you on that and we will talk about that.
21st, no, it's the 21st.
All right, we'll move on from there.
I have something, baby.
Dawn?
I would like to let everyone know that in March, I will not be seeking reelection for town clerk and town treasurer. I'm going to be 72 years old in January and I've been working here for over 20 years and I think it's time for me to step down and for someone younger to take over.
I told you before, Dawn, I think we should have left together.
And I've also spoken with Hannah today and she is interested in the positions.
Got to put your name on the ballot.
All right. Anybody else for boards and officials?
Oh, there's one thing, other thing. I'm in the process of having a tag sale.
Okay, good. All right. We'll move on to Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation, who will ask again to be on the agenda, but I don't see anybody from BDCC here, so we will move on from that. We'll go to warrants and mail.
Do you know what they want to discuss with us?
It has to do with us applying for grants for the town Raj because they are acting as our intermediary. And they need your approval as a select board and they want to speak to you about what they want to do.
This is the second or third time that they've asked to come, but...
Yeah, well, I'll contact Adrian and see what's up with him.
So is that separate from the COVID money that we talked about?
Yes.
Yes, yes. We already have one grant for a grant writer, so she's going to be helping us in some small way. She can't do everything, so...
So one of these says flood and the other one just says beaver pond, that was not the flood?
No, that wasn't the flood.
Okay.
That was for those.
The dump truck went into the beaver pond.
Because the sand, the sand.
Not for the truck. What'd they do that for?
See, we have a question.
Okay.
At the last meeting, there was a discussion about where we were going to get the sand. You were going to talk about it tonight?
Well, we, Matt looked at the sand and we, he agreed that the lowest bid was the best, was fine sand. He had had some issues with last year's sand from them, but this year it was, that was fine and we took the low bid.
So you went with the 1515?
Yes.
So I just want to clarify a couple of things that we were... Are you going to get back to me about this business of who I can contact to bring the trailer down?
Yes, we will have a policy on that.
And what about the hazard mitigation plan, do you leave that with?
I will contact you when we can form a meeting and have...
No, 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 the old plan.
Darlene can find that for you and she'll get a copy of that for me.
So I'll come down Monday. Okay, thank you. One apartment, so... Huh? One apartment, so... Yeah. Is it a law shop? I just want to say...
Kelly, you don't have regular invoices for those?
They haven't come in the mail yet.
Okay.
I just called them and when they come in the mail, I'll slip them in there. And I'll put that with it too, so they...
Yeah, I brought a copy of them today.
Where's she?
Oh, me?
Yeah.
What'd you got? What's that?
Oh, I'll look at it, that's about the NRC there, that that made. Give you some help with that.
Can I make a copy of that?
Sure.
Hannah, it's $30 for each meeting that you have on soon. Is that these are?
$30 a month for the five users that we have registered to use the Google Meet.
Oh, it's June, July.
Yeah. I'll do it now, quarterly or so.
You guys want to talk with this, I just reached out a paper. This is the one you were reading from before.
Be careful, there's no mice in there.
Facilities policy?
Yes.
That applies to the town office and...
This is a tariff. This is the town office and the former school. Yes, that's the policy.
Irritate me? What's the? He told me to jump the stage.
And I said, oh, and I had a question, but now I can't remember what it was. Yeah, I kind of figured something like that was going on.
You look so sad.
I am sad.
Yeah, I saw that.
Well, that's what I want to ask you. How are the taxes?
A lot of them in?
Yeah, good. Enough to pay the schools.
Yeah, I saw that, that's why I was asking.
Then with plenty left over.
Nice. And you still have still some better, outstanding, delinquent?
Yeah, but not a whole lot.
Not a whole lot, perfect. Is that right? What was that same lockboard?
Something they did at the garage.
Okay. Was this in here?
No, this isn't here. But that was fourth of their line. Eight twenty-six.
Tuesday, we're going to Thursday. And I couldn't stay on the roof.
Everybody what? Not everybody, but good luck. What is it?
The water, the top there?
No, well, he said it on me.
Nope.
You care about something? No, I just. Yeah, I just, I can't. No, I was coming back, I don't do that many days. I went to a lot of conferences and taught classes and, uh, before, and I'm, I was more of a street dancer.
Yes.
That was, that totally. I did a lot of live parties. Got, got a little bit money at those live parties, so it's like, yeah. But then we realized that people don't like to pay for the arts.
So.
So I wanted to computer success.
Smart move, Litchie. I don't know, Broadway opened up.
Feel good.
I was also, I have secrets, I'm comfortable away.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean, in, in the shower. But, carry on.
You work for my.
I'm not really close to that world. Yeah, I think the guy who got a lot of money was just very tough, bro.
He's the one that came down.
The only way I was really able to make money is by like teaching some.
What do you want? Talk about getting a. How was she born?
Uh, this woman that I remember. Twenty thousand dollars on her first dance choreograph in the wedding.
We should probably.
Okay.
Not, not.
For getting ready, giving me the donuts.
He's like. Yeah, so much.
Well, that was just like, I just couldn't believe that he's ever seen that.
Yeah, no, I was like, I told my mom, I was like. We're going to repair the pond in ten minutes, bar and potluck. And I was like, stupid, letting this go down.
You gotta get time, that's what matters, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Did you guys get married?
Well, it's damage, so it's irresponsible.
Not long, I know.
August twenty-sixth.
No, that's off. It's June song. Also, yeah, also we're like, we're waiting for the wedding. Like, I'm married, I'm sending the house insurance.
America's angry, I've ever heard.
All right, we will move on to roads. Did you have anything from that?
No.
At least not, don't you do?
No, I have not really. I mean, they, the roadside mowing that came. They worked a lot of hours getting that, trying to get everybody done.
Worked the holiday too, or something.
Yep, you worked the holiday, you worked Sunday, and you worked the Saturday the rest of the week.
Yeah, because it was delivered on Saturday, right?
No, it was delivered Friday night.
Friday night.
It was supposed to be here by eleven, and never showed up until, um, I don't know what time of the afternoon, but.
Yeah.
But we got the full week, Joe.
We got the whole week?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Because it left, uh, Friday, it was supposed to have been picked up by noon on Friday. They got the whole week.
Yeah, I mean, the road's a bit.
And, um, he's just waiting on Ivor to see when they're going to do that.
On Mill Hill.
Yeah, up Mill Hill, and finish up the, uh, he's got a little finishing up down Brookline Road. Kind of ate in, he's got to put some more stone in.
Down by Haggard Road, down by the pond, Haggard.
I think he had put some stone down to the pond, but he needed to talk to the guy that was it? Scott Jensen, I'm not sure.
Scott Jensen, yeah, that's anyone.
Oh, okay, about that because of the water.
Yeah.
And, uh, so he put some rocks down there, and he doesn't know. He, he thinks there might be some, something else needed because it's still quite soft.
Is, is that where they put the underdrain?
No, that's where the.
Oh, that's where that was, okay.
So we can't just barrel in there and fix it because it's.
Too soft.
Wetland, wow, no, it's wetland, so we're going to get permits from the state and their agreement to it. All right, um, we also had the discussion about the backhoe.
Yeah. So that's, that's not mail, that's not worked.
No, I see.
Is that mine?
I don't know, I'm sure it's mine. I got mine.
Well, that must be mine.
Smaller than that, is it too big?
No, you have a better one. What do you want? No, it's not. This is a budget size report, this is correct.
I think that's Darlene. You didn't know this?
No, I don't see one. Wait, I like you.
Oh, no, this is, this is the balance sheet.
Yeah, so that's yours.
Okay.
All right, Hannah, about the backhoe.
Yes, I called the, uh, is it Jeff? That did the est, the appraisal and the estimate. I asked him, um, and that was a clerical error, that four hundred eighty-nine thousand. He said it is a purchase lease, lease purchase, that, uh, if we decide to go with that payment, the last payment will be increased by one dollar, and then we own the backhoe.
In five years.
In five years.
So what is a monthly payment?
Well, yearly, isn't it?
Yes, yearly. I believe I gave you a copy last.
Your last time.
Well, I don't know if you.
Oh, so nothing's changed?
Nothing's changed, but it will change if we don't decide to do it by October first. Everything's going up by five percent. And I asked him how long of a wait. He kind of chuckled. He said it's supposed to be three to four months, but it could be longer. But this price will be, once the order is signed, will be the price whenever it comes.
And what happens if, if our backhoe breaks down, or something happens to it between the time we've signed it and the time we?
Well, I didn't ask him that question.
Have we got any, will the insurance cover it, or will it?
Oh, generally, we have to fix it before they take it.
So I think.
Yeah. I didn't ask him that. I can call him back and ask him those questions.
Well, I think, I think that we should probably do it. It seems like a reasonable price. Probably they are giving us more for the backhoe that we have now because of shortages and.
Yeah, they're worth a lot more.
What is the monthly cost?
Are we yearly, I mean yearly. That's what they, the amount, that's the amount, this kind of price, that's the amount of backhoe. That's what they're giving us for the, the trade. That's the net trade, and that is the amount that the yearly payment.
What is the yearly amount?
Ten thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars.
I will make a motion that we enter into this agreement to, to trade in the backhoe with a price of ten thousand six hundred and.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two dollars a year for five years with a, in a piece to own program.
And it's the same size backhoe?
It's the same, same size, same size. He did get, I think Matt put in, I'm probably wrong, wheel spacers so he can put chains on because he hasn't been able to put chains on this back one because of the fender.
Close.
Yeah.
For the bottom.
So, um.
And that comes, when you're leasing it, they would, excuse me, they do all the maintenance on it? Or do we still have to provide the maintenance?
I believe we provide the maintenance.
Okay.
We probably provide the maintenance, but the covered components are.
I was just looking, you said you gave me a copy last time?
Well, we had it there, I'm, I can't, I don't see mine either.
I don't see mine, I don't.
I don't think you have.
I don't think, I don't.
So these are the covered things, I believe.
But the hourly rate for the guy to come down and fix it is not covered. He said usually the first year they kind of do that. But he said they also hired somebody, a Westminster, to do.
A T G.
No, some, some other.
A private contractor?
I don't know, but.
Okay.
So that the hourly rate for him traveling is a lot less.
So, I mean, if we keep it for a few more years, it's just going to, a value is going to go down for the trade in.
Yeah, I understand. The committee has been saying for years, get everything on, on a schedule.
Yeah.
And our, our payment now is twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
Close to twenty-eight, yeah.
So, and it's going down to this.
And going down to ten, yeah.
In five years, we'll own it, we'll be able to raid it then, if we want. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that motion.
Uh, and in that motion, if to have Janet deal with the, with the company?
And he did say that you might want to appoint somebody to sign the.
Agreement.
The agreement, the order, purchase order, or whatever it is.
The motion that I made there is to have Janet handle the dealings with them and, and to sign any contracts on behalf of the board. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to make a copy of this, Darlene?
Yeah, I can put it on by.
All right, uh, I don't have anything for executive session.
No, we got tickets.
Is there any further business?
I do not have any further business.
Oh, excuse me, are we going to talk about having a town meeting this fall for, to see if people want the.
Australian ballot?
Australian ballot?
I think we probably should because who knows what.
COVID's going to be.
What COVID's going to be, uh, and who knows if the legislature will have us just do it like we did last year and stuff.
Yeah.
It would not, I think it would be a reasonable idea to invest, certainly investigate what we think about that. Maybe we could reach out to our state reps to see what their thinking is, if the law is going to be extended for another year, if there's any talk of that, anything like that. And we can bring it up at our October meeting as to whether we're going to have, hold a town meeting or.
Yeah.
And reconcile or not, so.
Yeah.
That is reasonable, I mean, personally, I mean, I, I understand that a lot more people came and voted, Australian ballot. But to me, a Vermont town meeting is in person, getting the community members together, so.
I understand that.
I mean.
I, I think if it wasn't for this, for COVID and everything, uh, we wouldn't be even thinking about this. It'd be no, we're doing it like we've done it for two hundred years here. Although sometimes you've got to change things too.
You know, maybe they'll only want to do the elected officials and then keep the articles the way they are, or whatever.
It can be, it can be a hybrid of either of those ways.
Yeah.
All right, so who wants to talk to state reps, see about that law, which it has expired now, but.
It hasn't.
Well, the, it, it only was good for last town meeting. It's not good for this coming town meeting.
No, not for that, but it's good for the whole year.
Yeah, but it's, we, we would not be.
March, it'll be next year, yeah.
But we would not be able to, as a board, not be able to vote to have an Australian ballot ourselves. It would have to be a town meeting, I believe. So just if there's any talk in legislature of extending that, or, or to, just give us some.
I can reach out, Thomas.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any further business? Don't everybody speak at once. I will make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that motion.